Good evening and welcome to the October 25th meeting of the Newport News City Council. If you're with us tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby and indicate item I if the item you wish to address tonight is not on the agenda. We have a light system on our podium. After you give your name and address, the green light will appear. At the end of two minutes, the yellow light. At the end of three minutes, the red light. We then ask that you properly take your seat. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of council means matters that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask at this time if you would please silence your phones. Prior to the beginning of the business portion of the meeting, we will have Pastor Ben Rothwell from Crosswalk Church will provide an invocation to the city council. Afterwards, the scouts from Colonial Virginia Council will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of these council members to stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Those who wish to do so are welcome, but you are under the obligation to do so. Pastor, if you would.
Thank you so much. Mayor Price, this will be the last time I'm able to give the invocation under your leadership, so I just want to publicly thank you for your service and your leadership over the last several years. It's been an honor to serve with you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Can we pray together this evening? Lord, we come before you today knowing, knowing that we are at a significant time of the year, not just for our country, but also for our city. And we don't take lightly the various things that are happening, not only in this room, but throughout our city, as we look forward to the opportunity to exercise democracy next Tuesday. And so tonight, God, with so many things that we have to address and discern and learn how to lead through, Lord, we ask for your wisdom. We ask for your grace. God, we ask that in the midst of everything going on and all of the various ideas and ideologies that are represented, not only here in this room, but across the many circles of relationships that are impacted by this election season and by everything happening in this room tonight, Lord, we pray that you would give us a spirit of unity. We know that where there is unity, that is where you give your blessing. And we know that as people who share a like-minded desire for the best interests of our city and our state and our nation and our world, that we don't always have to see eye to eye in order to work shoulder to shoulder. So tonight, we just simply submit this idea to you that you will be in our midst and that you will give us wisdom and grace as we lead. So Father, we thank you for this time that we have together. We give to you these concerns and these troubles, these various things that we carry in, concerned about solving and leading through. And we simply acknowledge that with humility, with grace, with honesty, character, integrity, and with passion, that we will make the best decision we know how for those we've been entrusted to lead. So we give this evening to you. And as we exercise our democratic rights next week and we vote for leadership here locally and nationally, we thank you that you work all things together for the good of those who know you and are committed to you. Thank you for this time we have together tonight. Amen.
Pick up.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Clinton Hammett, Chief Executive Officer of the Colonial Virginia Council, to please join me at the podium.
Come hold the rest of you guys, too.
Whereas October the 8th, 2022 marks the 30th anniversary of the Colonial Virginia Council Boy Scouts of America, established in Newport News, Virginia. And whereas throughout its distinguished history, scouting has inspired millions of boys and girls with high ideals of the scout oath and the scout law. And whereas through the scouting experience, young men and women develop the skills and lessons that will prepare them for life so that they may contribute to their communities. And whereas the Colonial Virginia Council takes an active role in increasing young people's commitment to leadership, service, and stewardship, living their duty to God and country, duty to others, as well as the duty to their personal growth. And whereas tens of thousands of youth have been served by the Colonial Virginia Council during the past 30 years, with nearly 3,000 current youth members of the Colonial Virginia Council across the Virginia Peninsula, Middle Peninsula, the South, Central, and Eastern Virginia. Now therefore, I, McKinley L. Price, Mayor of the City of Newport News, do hereby proclaim the weekend of November the 4th through the 6th, 2022, as Colonial Virginia Council Scout Weekend in the City of Newport News and applaud the commitment scouts have made to support the leadership development of America's youth. And before I give you something, I just wanted to share with you, this is my dad and me doing a project in the Boy Scouts.
Wow.
And here's the proclamation.
Okay. All right, I'll be brief. Good evening. I just want to start off by again thanking you all for allowing us the opportunity to be with you here tonight. I am Clint Hammett, the Chief Executive Officer for the Boy Scouts. Been with the organization for 18 years. We moved here five years ago from the DC area. I don't have a traditional background. I grew up in the inner city first to go to school, graduate from college. If it weren't for a football scholarship, I wouldn't have went to school. So I'm excited about the scouting organization because had I known about it at a younger age, I would have participated. So I'm humbled to have this opportunity now to serve in this capacity as we look forward to giving more young people, both boys and girls, the opportunity for future development, character education, outdoor leadership, and to help shape our great country we call the United States of America. So on that, I'd like to thank you again for this opportunity. Thank the scouts, a nice diverse group of scouting, which we're all about here in the Colonial Virginia Council. And please, we need your help. We're celebrating 35 years ago. No one thought we'd be here. So for those that know what we've been through, and the loss of our camp, loss of our scouting office, and majority of our staff, we're still fighting the good fight. And we've turned some things around here nationally. So be proud of that, and let's keep scouting on. Thank you.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
Since I have a little vested interest here, I have a grandson that so many of you knew, Michael, and my son-in-law back there, who never has led his troop, but he's led many other troops and has kept... If I could make any wish tonight, it would be that every young person in this city would be a member of Boy Scouts of America. So I'm proud of you. Thank you for coming and congratulations.
Where I take a quick picture, Mike, with the mayor.
Someone stand up.
Good, thank you.
Bravo.
We are now at the public hearing section. Page four, item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning text amendment number ZT 2022-007 to the City of Newport News, amending and reordaining city code chapter 45 zoning ordinance article 31, overlay zoning districts and regulations to add Division 11 Southeast Community Resource Area Overlay District. The overlay will permit the development of public community facilities following a master plan, which will be based on the guiding principles of the Southeast Community Resource Area Plan. On October the 5th of this year, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously 6-0 to recommend approval of the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment number ZT-2022-007. The city manager recommends approval. I don't see any... There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 16, item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute all, any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located in King William County to Ronald E. Wilson and Sharon K. Wilson. During the late 1990s and early 2000s, Newport News Waterworks acquired 37 parcels in King William County for the development of King William Reservoir. When the King William Reservoir project was discontinued, this property became surplus. Waterworks has received an offer to purchase one parcel of surplus King William property. Mr. Ronald Wilson has offered to purchase one, number one, it's 0.674 acre parcel for $3,000. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move. Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Go move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 22, item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located in King William County to James R. Hall and Hilda P. Hall. The background information is the same as in E2. Waterworks has received an offer to purchase one parcel of surplus property. This couple has offered to purchase one parcel comprising on 1.5 acres. The real estate appraisal has placed a value of $5,025 on this parcel for which James and Hilda have made a full price offer. James and Hilda are adjacent landowners and the former owners of the property. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Go move.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page E4 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located in King William County to William M. Lipscomb Jr. and Alisa A. Lipscomb. The background information is the same as in item 2 in E3. William and Alisa Lipscomb have offered to purchase two parcels totaling 21.8 acres. The real estate appraisal has placed a value of $82,000 on this parcel for which they have made a full price offer. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Go move. On second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 36, item E5 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located in King William County to Crystal S. Hogg. Crystal S. Hogg. The background information is the same as in E2, 3, and 4. Waterworks has received an offer to purchase one parcel of surplus property, and the landowner has offered to purchase 6.4 acres for the full price of $9,000. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move. Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Go move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 42, item E6 is a request to approve an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned properties located at 2712 Wickham Avenue, 1047 31st Street, and 621 44th Street to To Be Homes LLC. To Be Homes LLC plans to construct new single-family homes on the site. To Be Homes LLC has specialized experience in developing similar small plots, and it has done this successfully in other locations in Newport News. The potential sale has been circulated for the interdepartmental review, and no objections to the conveyance were received. The purchase price for the lots is a combined XX value of $29,300. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move. Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I did have some questions. We know that according to our ordinance, our lots are 50 by 100-foot for building, and these are 37.5 by 106.25. So do we get examples of what structures would be these 37.5? Can we, if we don't have it tonight, can we at least get something so that we can see what that development would look like?
Okay. As part of the sale, there's criteria that's attached to it. His 37 and 1/2-foot wide lots would have to go through a special exception. He's done several already in the community, but we can get you some examples.
That would be great to be able to see that. I wish it was part of our packet so we could actually visualize what they look like on that size lot, because you know, we've had conversation about the 25 by 100-foot lots as well. So to have something that's smaller than a 50 by 100-foot lot, it would be great to be able to see that. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Wait, hold on, Sheila, while you... Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
So they're undersized lots, so are they going to have... Do they have to pay for the special to submit to the...
Yes, to go through the special exception process?
The builder or developer will have to pay?
Yes.
For that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if since we were doing this that we would try to assist them since they're building a home in the area?
He's building several homes in the area. He's well aware of the process. So he really wants those lots.
Okay, thank you.
So with that being said, another question. So you said he's built several. This is the first time I've heard of this 37...
Well, he buys them. If he finds 37 and 1/2-foot wide lots, he just buys them and he comes in for special exceptions in order to build on them.
So he's done special exceptions before for 37?
Yes.
Okay. I don't remember that. Okay. So it would be great to be...
But it was somebody else owning, not the city, so he didn't have to come to us.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So it'd be great just to be able to see a sample of that. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
And yeah, so but when he's filing for a special exception, though, he's filing because... What is the reasoning that he's saying that you all will be able to grant him the special exception?
He builds his houses to meet the criteria stated in the special exception.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
So it has a garage on it. Yes, it does.
Wow.
But he had... That's not clear to me. I'm sorry, Ms. McGowan. That's not clear. I really need clarity now that you've said that.
The criteria states that it has to have an onsite garage.
Okay.
And he can put, he can fit that on that lot. Has to have front porch, and so he meets all of the criteria.
Okay, but he's never had to come here for a special exception because the city didn't own it?
He goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. He goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Goes to the Planning Commission for a recommendation and then directly to the Board of Zoning Appeals to grant the special exception. It doesn't come before city council.
So it doesn't come before us anyway?
Correct.
So why is this coming before?
Because he's buying the land from us.
From us.
Yes.
The other people didn't own... We didn't own the other lots where he did this exception. We own these lots.
That would be correct. So he didn't have to come to the Board of Appeals to get the exception?
Yes, he did. He had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
It just wasn't our property.
Correct.
It's so wonderful. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 48, item E7 is a request to approve a resolution requesting the Virginia General Assembly to amend the city charter, Chapter 12, Assessment of Real Estate Taxation. The requested amendments to Sections 12.03 and 12.04 will remove outdated Virginia Code sections. The additional amendments to Section 12.04 will clarify provisions pertaining to the Board of Review's adoption of procedural regulations. And the proposed amendment of Section 12.05 will require persons who are aggrieved by any assessment made by the real estate assessor to apply for relief with the Board of Review as a prerequisite to filing for relief in the circuit court. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Go move. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page fifty-two, item E eight is a request to approve a resolution requesting the Virginia General Assembly to amend the city charter, Chapter Seventeen, Miscellaneous Provision, Section Seventeen point zero five, Continuance of Acre of Acts nineteen twenty-six, Chapter Five Thirty. The current charter provision requires the city to purchase, to publish notice of its intent to sell any real property that is part of the waterworks systems for four consecutive weeks prior to the adoption of the ordinance authorizing the conveyance. The proposed amendment to Section seventeen point zero five will reduce the current advertising requirement from four successive weeks to two successive weeks. The reduction will allow the city to save on advertising costs and allow transactions involving Waterworks' property to be brought before city council more expeditiously. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second. Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
No move, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page fifty-five, item E nine is a request to approve a resolution requesting the General Assembly to amend the city charter by adding Chapter Three A recall. The proposed amendment will provide voters with an avenue to recall members of council should circumstances warrant such an action. Having the option to recall ensures that all persons who hold office may do so only as long as their tenure of office is sanctioned by the will of the people. The proposed amendment would allow for any member of council to be recalled and removed from office only by the qualified voters of the district with which such a member serves, or in the case of the mayor, from the qualified voters of the city at large. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
That also moved voting?
Just to close the public hearing.
Four. Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Hearing no motion, the, um, ordinance is not approved. We are now at consent agenda. Items F contains the following items. Page sixty, uh, minutes of the work session of October the eleventh. Page ninety-seven, minutes of the regular meeting of October the eleventh. Page one seventeen, a resolution approving the extension of an invitation to, and I'm not even gonna try this, uh, Carrickline County Court, Ireland, to enter into Sister City relationship with the city of Newport News, Virginia. And, um, Kate and Fred are here in case we have any questions about that last item. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items F one and F through F three, all inclusive?
No move, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I'd like to just say something. I'm just thrilled about this, and I plan, whenever we get a chance to visit Ireland, I plan to be the first one on the plane. And we're, we've worked on this, and Fred has worked so hard, but it is going to be such an exciting time. And what many of you do not know is that there's been a relationship for, how many years, four hundred? Yes. That, the, the, this town that we are joining with had, uh, Irish settlers right on the property that we are on right now, four hundred years ago. So, you should look it up. Uh, is it online at all, Kate?
Yeah.
It is.
On the Sister Cities website.
Wonderful. And make yourself aware of what, what a wonderful thing this is. And, uh, plan to go with me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I just want to applaud, uh, the work of Sister Cities Newport News for all that they do, and, and more importantly, even for this, uh, sibling relationship that is about to come. And I, I do wish that, uh, our executive director of the Sister Cities, uh, Foundation, uh, Kate Helwick had come up to at least tell the public about this. Kate, would you mind just coming and just, just mention a little bit? Uh, we are Sister Cities with a Greiswall in Germany, with Taizhou in, in China, uh, with Niigawa in Japan, with, uh, I think we have a friendship with Nigeria in France, and now this one in Ireland. And I know she's gonna add, uh?
Greiswall?
Germany. Germany, yeah. I did say that. And I hope that we add, uh, uh, African country or some other ethnic group, because we need a little more diversity, Ms. Kate. But go ahead and talk about Ireland tonight, if you would.
No problem. Um, so, um, council heard me at work session, um, but the members assembled, or the citizens assembled here probably, um, haven't viewed that yet. Um, so, Sister Cities is, is in its fortieth year this year. We, uh, first sistered in, um, nineteen eighty-two with Niigawa, Japan, and that turned out to be a fruitful relationship that resulted in Cannon, Virginia, establishing a very fine, uh, operation in Cannon here in our city. Next was with our Chinese Sister City, and while that relationship really was quite productive for a while, COVID, of course, brought around some new, uh, conditions, and we, we don't plan to be traveling or exchanging with them in a, a physical sense anytime soon. Then we moved on to Greiswall, Germany, which is former East Germany, um, and that has proved also a very productive and fruitful relationship. Um, we, for some time, have looked at, um, France, um, the city of Saint Nazaire, which was the port of debarkation for, uh, expeditionary forces in World War One from the city of Newport News to support, uh, the war efforts. Um, and while that hasn't fleshed out yet, we're still hopeful. Um, however, uh, two, three years ago, we were made aware of this partnership in Ireland, and wow, has it taken off. And to learn the history and to realize that Mary's Mount, um, is here, um, on our property that we're standing on right now, where the Port of Virginia has a coal yard, is really kind of phenomenal. So, I encourage, um, all citizens, um, to go to the Sister Cities website, um, and look at the history, learn a little bit more. There's a great twelve-hour-long webinar on there, um, from, uh, two thousand and one, uh, that we produced, um, during the heart of the pandemic. Um, but I do thank the, the volunteer board of Sister Cities. We are a nonprofit, um, and we appreciate the support of council to move us on to this next stage. And with regard to, uh, Councilwoman Scott's request for possibly an African sister city, we are currently looking at a country called Malawi, uh, and anybody who's interested in that, please do, uh, reach out to us, and we'd love to have you participate. So, thank you again for your support, and, uh, Carrickline is asking me to text them tonight to let them know. And I'm not a texter, but I will do my best.
I just wanna push again for Liverpool.
Liverpool, yes, yes. Uh, Mayor Price won a couple of years ago and had a, had a really good relationship. Um, so, they are sistered with Birmingham, actually. So, I gotta work it out with Birmingham.
Okay. I know the mayor. I'll talk to him.
Okay, that works for us. So, thank you again.
Thank you for all you do with us, Sister Cities.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you. Uh, um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the reason that I asked, um, Kate Helwick, our executive director and her team, hi, guys. I'm a, a board member emeritus, and I've been on the board, Sister Cities Newport News, for my whole entire twenty-one years. And, uh, what I think a lot of citizens don't realize is when there is a delegation, you do have an opportunity to apply, to travel, uh, to the various countries. I've been to China and, and Germany and, and, um, Japan, uh, through Sister City relationships. And it's, it's the, uh, the people that you meet and the taste of culture that you get actually being there. And often, we did homestays. I don't prefer it, but we did homestays. And it was interesting, because you actually get to see how people live in those other countries, uh, from day to day. Uh, the, the last person I stayed with, she was a schoolteacher, and, uh, it was, and I think I stayed with the attorney and his family, so, uh, uh, it has been very fruitful. So, I encourage you all, once, um, travel is available and open up, that you all, uh, whenever these are advertised, that just, that you inquire. And now, uh, Sister Cities has an official office in city center, uh, that used to be the Jones S. Banks building. It's right on the corner. You can't miss it. It's beautifully decorated. If you walk by, you would know that, uh, Kate Helwick works there. So, I encourage you all to go by, and you still have the events on Friday?
I know the concert series is over the end of the year, um, but we're there, you know, basically ten to six with the, the LED lights blinking away as it comes.
All right, and she said ten to six every day, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, no further comments. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
We are now at other city actions. Page one twenty, item G one. Madam Manager.
Yes, this is a request to approve a resolution approving and adopting the city of Newport News legislative program for the twenty-twenty-three Virginia General Assembly Session, and I just wanna clarify, the draft package does have the reference to the charter amendment, and I am recommending approval without that charter amendment included in the package. So, what you will see going forward will be slightly different. It will not include the charter amendment for recall. Recommend approval.
Okay, uh, there are no speakers, so is there a motion to approve the resolution?
No move.
Without the?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Without the recall.
Yes, without the recall.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Okay, we are now at appropriations. Page one thirty-seven, item H. Madam Manager.
Yes, we have two. The first is a request to approve a resolution appropriating two hundred thousand dollars from the Newport News Police Department asset forfeiture funds for specialized police equipment. And the second item is a request to approve a resolution appropriating two hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-four cents in federal funds for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA state and local fiscal recovery funds, funding support to, for the COVID-nineteen Municipal Utility Assistance Program for the city of Newport News Waterworks Department, and I recommend approval of both items.
Okay, is there a motion to approve items H one and H two, all inclusive?
No move.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'm interested in that, the two hundred fifty-four thousand for the American Rescue. Where does that go? What, where, I didn't understand.
Those are the funds that come to the Waterworks Department to assist folks that have been impacted through COVID for assistance with their bills?
Well, can I ask if, if you've had any applications?
Would you come forward, please?
Have you had applications for those, and have you been granting them?
So, this is actually the second tranche. There was a first tranche that, no, uh, came last year, and now we have the second tranche. It's much smaller, because it's leftover money from the first tranche, and it's only two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We are hoping to work with, uh, D H C D to extend the, uh, restrictions, because it's for a certain period of time during COVID, and if we do, we'll be able to actually use that money to basically reimburse the bills, the arrears that people had accumulated during that time. And if we do, we'll be able to actually use that money to basically reimburse the bills, the arrears that people had accumulated during that time.
That haven't been paid for thus far?
Correct.
And who is, makes the judgment on that?
So thi- this is very simple. It's sixty-plus day arrears, and we have already had made the criteria. And, you know, basically it was in the legislation for ARPA since last year. This is just the second source of funding.
Second way, okay. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are the people who did not pay because, what, they lost their jobs or something during?
Pandemic-related, yes.
Okay.
So there was actually two programs. It was the MERC program, the Municipal Utility Aid Program, and there was ARPA. And ARPA was actually quicker to reimburse actually the bills for the arrears.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
No further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilwoman Harris.
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
We are now at citizens' comments on matters that are germane to the business of council. I will call them in order submitted. Samantha Richards.
Good evening to Mayor Price, city council members and staff. My name is Samantha RDL Richards, president of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Lambda Omega Chapter located in Newport News, Virginia, four zero two Windmill Loop, apartment three D, Newport News, Virginia, two three six zero two. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Members of the Lambda Omega Chapter, would you please stand? We, the members of the Lambda Omega Chapter, consisting of over two hundred and thirty college-trained women, would like to present two certificates of, of recommendation to Mayor McKinley L. Price for his outstanding service since his election in May of two thousand ten, and Councilwoman Sharon Scott for her dedicated service since two thousand and two. The certificates read, and I will just read one. That's acceptable. Thank you. Recognition of Outstanding Service. The following award is given to the Honorable McKinley L. Price. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Lambda Omega Chapter presents this award for exemplary public service in support of the residence and citizency of City of Newport News in Greater Hampton Roads. Samantha RDL Richards, President, Karen Baysmore Person, Vice President, and they read the same.
That's beautiful.
Thank you. Once again, thank you on behalf of the Lambda Omega Chapter. We salute.
I thank you again, and I'd like to compliment those of you who can keep secrets very well. Gee, man. Okay.
I was just wondering if, Ms. Price, did you have any hand in giving your husband the award? Was, did you have any hand in that? So, so raw.
We are now at new business. I take that back. Pam Hall. I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself. Yeah. That's nice.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Pam Hall, and I live in the southeast community. I continue to stand representing the will of over four hundred petitioners against moving Huntington. The history and the legacies of the City of Newport News should be preserved and not rewritten or relocated. In my opinion, as a native daughter of Newport News, our youth would benefit by the daily reminder of the pride of the mighty Vikings as they walk on two blocks of the hallowed and historic grounds on which our beloved Huntington High School last stood. I am still waiting to see the results of the study showing the impact on our youth of no community center in the area for more than three years. Rekindle democracy in the City of Newport News and listen to the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Garrison.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Evening, council members. My name is Diane Garrison. I live at three fifty-six Rivers Ridge Circuit over in Newport News in the North District. I'm the homeowner-president of the Lees Mill condominium association, and there's been a lot of discussion about a pool put in at the Demby Community Center, and I'm very passionate about it. We have six communities over there. One happens to be a handicap, the Phoenix Village over there, which would benefit from this pool. We have five schools in that area that take in Fort Eustis also, that the kids live outside of Fort Eustis. And I'm just really passionate about having them have an area to come to. We have nothing over there for the children that are thirteen to eighteen years old to do in that area other than to play basketball down at the Passage, the middle school over there, and some of the areas over there. I just asked the council to please think about that. This past summer, in June, I had a very unpleasant incident happen to me because we are an HOA, and we have a private pool there, that I had several older children take me to task, and it was very unpleasant. And so I'm asking you to think about seriously adding the pool to our area over there. That will help us out. And just in my community alone, I have a hundred and ninety-nine homes that range from elderly people and young families over there. So I'm asking you to please consider putting a pool there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lily Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Lily Robinson. My address is eight one five Twenty-Eighth Street, apartment thirty-one oh two, Newport News, Virginia, Jefferson Brookridge Apartments. I come on behalf of Newport News and my cousins and my family and everybody with a message for y'all on city council. And I'm asking y'all to please listen to me. I don't want to be time of Mr. Price to cut me off. But before I ask this and stuff, let me tell you what happened to a senior citizen, a voting senior citizen. Just now, when I was coming across the bridge like I've had the last couple of times and stuff, I know, just show you where I live, that I just moved there. I caught a nightmare getting in there from housing, but that's another story, another day. Somebody got to do something about it. I left my house. I used to go straight down and catch the bus at the Seven Eleven with the lights and everything, and you might go in the store, talk to people and stuff. But maybe running a little bit later and everything, I said, shoot, your bus is right up here, Twenty-Sixth Street and Madison Avenue, by the barber shop. I went up there. I turned that corner for that bus. No lights at all at that bus stop. I was sitting out there. I said, oh, my God. I said, this is unreal. This is what we're talking about in Newport News. When them young men were talking about how they used to say they caught a light, but them children get lights in the field. I was sitting up there. I was so mad. I said, God, please let me get over here to city council, because that's city property, because that's bus. No lights at all and stuff. And I was so mad, but you know what happened to me while I was sitting up there? And I wasn't scared, because you know crime is high in Newport News. God knows it is and stuff. And they're not doing anything about it, and they're not making us safe. I was sitting there so mad, the school bus came by, and this young boy stood up. He reached out the window, pulled it down. He said, hi, ma'am. How you doing this evening? And I couldn't do nothing but turn around and smile. I said, thank God for our children, and they don't want to do nothing for us. I come over here in behalf of the people over across the bridge. Oh, before I go, I'm putting in that complaint. I'm not going to be calling around the mall all day and trying to get the city to come out there and do it. I'm asking y'all to get it, do it. Because I may want to catch the bus out tomorrow night, not coming over here, but wherever I want to go, and I would like, likes to be up there while I'm catching the bus and stuff. It has been so much and stuff. When I first came over here, I was so mad at y'all. I came over behind the parade. God knows and stuff I did. And I know I acted a little bit up, but that's how mad I was. But I come over here now as a senior citizen, a native Newport News life. I left here, like I told you, when I came back. And over my years here and stuff, I have seen y'all take, 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 take them little by little, everything. And then you don't want to give. And you've spent over thirty, forty years building up.
Ms. Robinson, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Robinson, your time is up. I gave you extra, I gave you extra time the last time. And if I give you extra time, I have to give everyone extra time. I'm going to ask that you please give your complaint to Mr. Freeman in the back.
Mister Mayor, may I ask what corner, because I serve on the HRT board, and I would like to know the address. What is the address?
Twenty-Sixth Street and Marshall Avenue, the one oh four and the one oh one. See, he doesn't want to listen to everything.
No, I'm just asking you for, because I need to report this, twenty-sixth and what?
Marshall Avenue.
Marshall, okay. I thank you, and I, I know you'll respect our mayor.
Yes, I will and stuff.
And thank you. And thank you for coming.
Hey, I lived on the street from him. He was born and raised up on Thirty-Pic's and Marshall.
Thank you for coming.
I don't know him personally, but I know his brother and everything, and that's what I'm saying.
Thank you for coming.
I am not understanding. He is mayor, and he knows what we had in this city, and he did absolutely nothing.
Ms. Robinson, I'm going to ask you again, only because rules are for everyone, and I don't like doing this. But if I give you extra time, I have to give everyone extra time. And if you have continued to complain.
The ones that came over here and gave y'all the war, got their time, and gave y'all praises.
If you continue to have a complaint, please give it to Mr. Freeman in the back, who will take down your request. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, for coming out.
I just want y'all to know, we are going to look at y'all, because these people that called me, they have cocks, and try cocks, when they look at y'all on the TV, and they the ones that asked me to come speak to y'all. He would not be here, thank God, no more. And they were saying, but I'm talking about the ones that going to be left. And just like that, with Vice Mayor Cherry, we were so blessed to have Jessica Riley, and they would never make her mayor, never. Vice Mayor.
Ms. Robinson, I'm going to ask you for the last time to please consider the rules of council and give your complaint to Mr. Freeman in the back.
And y'all got the blessing to get it, and neither one of y'all did nothing. You're not even trying to help our city out. You vote for us not to have a parade in Newport.
Would you please help this young lady? Thank you so much.
And y'all not doing the same for Huntington like you supposed to. If y'all could turn Jefferson Brookridge and renovate it from a church to a apartment, make it money, and win it for hospital, y'all can leave Huntington there and build it from the inside out and make it for our children. They only know what it is. But I'm about to go. I'm, I'm about to go.
Well, Ms. Robinson, before you leave, does Mr. David, he, let me with him outside, so you can give him all the information, so he can follow up with you. Give him your information, Ms. Robinson, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Let me just say this last thing before I go to bed. Oh, you don't tell me that it couldn't like I ain't nothing and stuff. I'm, I'm telling you, we need to look, because is it somebody on this ward?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
I dealt with Ms. Pick and stuff.
We're now at new business. Madam Manager, do you have anything?
Okay, sir.
Mr. Attorney. Madam Clerk. Councilman Harris.
Yes, good evening. Before I have my comments, I do have a motion. I don't want to make a motion for our voting delegates for the National League of City, Ms. Chair, Councilwoman Sharon Scott, and Vice Mayor Sandra Cherry.
This motion is there second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Now, when is it?
The nineteenth second.
When is, it's the seventeenth of the, oh, the nineteenth of the. Okay. Just FYI.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilwoman Harris.
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
All right, and now to my comments. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out and being a part of our meeting on tonight, our public meeting. I do want to celebrate and acknowledge Tommy Raymond Jr. on having another incredible city fest, even though it was held in Hampton. Newport News was well represented during that time, as they brought a lot of our vendors here in the city over to Hampton. And a lot of our young people and our, some of our elders were there and celebrating the communal environment in which we had music.
Are you talking about being, when you say elders, ma'am?
Our seasoned, our seasoned citizens here in the city. But yeah, we, we had a very good time, and of course, Mayor Price shared some comments, Congressman Scott shared some comments. It was just a lovely environment to be and see all those young people dancing and having a good time, and it, it was a very nice time. And hopefully, we could host it in Newport News one day, because the city on my chest organization, they're doing phenomenal things just to bring our communities together and strengthening the young people up for the future. Pre-pandemic.
What we'll do is we'll nominate you to be in charge of.
Look, I'll be, I'll be in charge. We can bring to Newport News, because it's a very, it's a, if you haven't had a chance to get out there, it's a very nice event. Mayor Price and some others were out there, and they see just how, how energetic it was to bring that spirit out there to the community. On pre-pandemic, I would always try to recognize young people in our city. They would come to some of the city council member meetings and be able to fellowship with some of our council members afterwards. Got away from it a couple of years ago when we started doing the virtual meetings and never really picked it back up. But I want to get back to it, because it was some unfortunate news that was happened in our community couple, last couple of weeks with some young people, but there's always a lot of good news that doesn't get highlighted when what our young people are doing. And I just wanted to get back to that because of the fact, like even last night, I was able to go out to Todd Stadium, and the middle school students had the citywide track meet, which it was hundreds of kids represented from the North District, Central District, and South District, from all the middle schools. They were getting along, competing, and, and just seeing the camaraderie amongst all the schools was, was great to see. Don't know how much it was highlighted, but it was, it was a phenomenal event to see all those young people engaged in such a positive environment, and seeing those adults working with them, leading them, coaching them, and, and that's something that people may not always get a chance to see. So that was a, a great opportunity to see that. Also had a chance to go and stop at Stony Run Elementary School. Got to make sure I say it right, because I used to work there when it was another name. But they had their back-to-school night on last Thursday, and it was a back-to-school bash. And the principal, Ms. Carneesha Ford, Ms. Rhonda Chambers Harmon, they coordinated this great event for the community. So it wasn't just in the building. They had the community come over with the, the parents, bringing their kids, and they had a nice event for the kids. And it's always good to see those young people having a good time at school, and being there. They had food trucks, they had vendors out there, they had popcorn, inflatables that they were able to play in. So it was just a, a great, fun academic environment to make those kids feel good about being at school and seeing those families having a good time, interacting with the staff members. So that was a great time. But I do want to acknowledge some students that I was able to get some information on from Jenkins Elementary School under the administration of Ms. Kelly Stewart, who's doing, also doing a great work in the school and in the community. And she let me know about these four young people that I want to highlight, and I hope to get over there soon to let them know that they were being recognized on tonight. One fifth, well, all of them are fifth-grade students. One is Mr. Nairi Sparks, who is in Ms. Sawyer's class. And he's new to Jenkins this year, transferred in and just took the school over by his, his intellect and his respectful behavior. He's a great student academically, behaviorally, and, I'm sorry, and she is a hard worker, and her teacher is very happy that she came over to join the Jenkins family. So I'm sorry, Ms. Nairi Sparks, I hope to get over there and see you soon. Then we have Mr. Hugo Delcide Arias. He's another fifth grader in the same class, Ms. Sawyer's class. He's a bilingual student as a fifth grader, and he takes his academics very seriously. And he's being highlighted for just how respectful he is and how he's always talking about the great things he wants to do in the future. Then we have Ms. Maya Ste Terry, another fifth grader in Ms. Kraus's class. She's a role model student who's always on the honor roll. And her teachers describe her as a goal-getter, because she's always chasing her goals, that she sits for herself and does not get distracted by anything that could be a disruption to her. And then Mr. Brian Rios is in Ms. Solomon's class, another bilingual student who's on the honor roll all the time, and he's always doing the right thing, and his classmates look up to him as a leader in the class. So for those four fifth graders over at Jenkins Elementary School, continue to do great things, continue to be those exemplary models of what we would like our students to be, and I hope to get over there soon and just shake their hands and let them know that the city now knows their names, and they will continue to, to be highlighted, and more young people will highlight to let them know there's a lot of good that takes place here in the city, as opposed to a lot of some of the negative stories that we hear. So I just wanted to share it on tonight, and hopefully, we can get them back so we can highlight them like we did the, the Boy Scouts that were on tonight. And that's all I have, Mayor Price.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Jenkins. Nothing for the shooting. Councilwoman Scott.
Yes, just a few things, Mr. Mayor. First, thank everybody for coming down tonight. It's always a delight to have people in the audience. When I started twenty-one years ago, we used to just talk to ourselves. There were so few people in the audience that, you know, we didn't have any disagreements or anything, you know, so, but I am always glad to hear all points of view, and I just appreciate. And a special thank you to you AKAs. I mean, I got a little misty, just, you know, didn't expect it, so thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. I really, really appreciate it, and thank you guys, for, ladies, for all that you all do for our community as well. We appreciate you. I just want to give kudos to our city manager for the city employee appreciation event that was up at the Kmart Shopping Center. It was a part, it was a real party. It was a DJ, plenty of food, trucks and things, and it, it was just, it was so awesome just to interact with the employees for a brief time. And, and actually, it was hot like a summer day, and I came out dressed like it was winter, and everybody wanted to know if I knew it was hot, you know, like, you know. I left home in the morning, and by noon, it was like eighty degrees. Right, it was a good time to be ahead by all, so I, the, the employees, they talked about how much they really appreciated just being able to get together and do that and have a couple of hours off in the middle of the day. So we appreciate you, Madam Manager. I have to also thank Parks and Recreation for moving night at the Kmart. I didn't get a chance to make it, but we appreciate any activities that come to the northern end of the city, because we are so far from the south, where a lot of things, great things are happening, that we appreciate any stop. Yeah, I said, I, I can see our, the corner, my, yeah, I said it. To New York, yeah. We can't drive from New York for activities, so we need to bring some activities to, to the north. So any other activities, Madam Manager, we can have that way. I know Christmas is coming. Maybe you can think of some excitement other than the twenty-first One City Celebrations Holiday Food Drive. Maybe we can do like a little kickoff and, you know, have everybody come, maybe some more popcorn or something. Anything that comes our way, we appreciate it. Also, I have to thank Lisa Cipriano, our Director of Finance. She did a fantastic job last night. She did a twenty-year review for me. I appreciate it, and she even brought me a twenty-one. So it, it was great, and, and even when she started talking about it, twenty-one years, I didn't even think about our budget was, when I got on the council, five hundred and eighty-seven million. That's one point three billion. And I, you know, being in the mix of things, you really don't see the transition as it grows, but it was, it was a really great presentation. If you would, email me a copy for those who normally attend and didn't have an opportunity, but it's something that you may want to share with NNTV, because it really gave a really great snapshot of twenty years of, of city investment and, and, and for the most part, but we appreciate you. And Elizabeth McCory and Angela Watson from Plannin, and Lieutenant Rajamar, Randy, from our North District Precinct. Also, just a big kudos to Father George. He would not forgive me if I did not mention how fantastic the food was at the Greek Festival. And I got there too late to have lamb, so I had, I bought a, a whole half a pan of musico, which is my second favorite. And we also stayed for some of the entertainment, the dance, and it was just great camaraderie, a very diverse event that he hosts twice a year, and the citizens just enjoy it. People were coming in, like, you ever see people go to the casino where they're running to get in? That's the way people go into the Greek festival, but the food is always fantastic. And just a, a one last special thank you to Dr. Willie Maxwell and New Beach Grove for their efforts for the Puerto Rican Outreach Humanitarian Project. I don't know where this man gets all these connections, but he put out a, a video about how much they needed things in Puerto Rico, and the whole church annexed building was full in like a week. And then we had some, some people, V L H Transportation's, they were played a part in getting the boxes over to, to the airport to get them shipped, and some of them were shipped for free. And then some of them ended up in Florida, but they benefited the people in Florida, because they never made it to Puerto Rico. But just an example of some of the things that are happening in the community. I just have to thank Gloria De Santos. She is from Puerto Rico. She was there when the storm happened, and she was the catalyst for getting this started. So we partnered with New Beach Grove, In Touch Ministries, and I, and Gloria. And, and I, I just want to remind everybody of the One City Celebration Holiday Food Drive Job Fair that's coming up December, the week of December fifteenth to the twenty-first. We already have fifty employers who are registered for the event. I'm sure Peter will be there with the Espia Nuda Clinic, so I'm encouraging you to go ahead and start looking in your cupboards and bring us your food. to go ahead and start looking in your cupboards and bring us your food, and you can drop off at the Denny Community Center starting November fifteen. We normally start a little bit early this year, because that only gives us a thirty-day window, so you can drop off there anytime, and we will have containers out front in the next couple of weeks. So that's all I have, Mister Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vick.
Yes, I wanted to say, welcome to the Women of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. It is great to have you here at our meeting tonight. As you probably already know, I am a soror, AKA the best sorority. And so, President Richards, thank you for honoring the mayor and councilwoman, but it's so good to see, have you here. And thank you all for staying involved, for everything you do in our community. But I have to say, this is the only other thing I have, Mister Mayor. There was a Fayetteville, North Carolina delegation that came here to, because they're thinking about applying for the Choice Neighborhood Grant, but, but I felt so honored that they chose us to be able to come here to get some guidance. So I was able to spend really almost all day with them, and, and Vice Mayor Cherry, she started at the beginning, I'm sorry, started at the beginning of the day. But to be able to share our experiences, to be able to take them on a tour of our city, and to be able to know that now, since we've gotten the Choice Neighborhood Grant to know that people will be coming to us to get guidance from, from what we've done. So a big thank you to, kudos to you, Madam Manager, and your entire team, because they felt very fortunate that they could come here to get the information, and to really see how we were able to place things in our city for the Choice Neighborhood. And, and that's all I have.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Yes, I would like to just, again, highlight what I said earlier about, I would just love it if every young person in the city of Newport News and any other city could have the experience that goes with scouting. I would love that for all our, our, our young people. And they, the thirtieth anniversary, or thirty-fifth, I've forgotten which, are going to have a day on November fifth. They will be at Lee Hall Mansion, and they will be giving exhibits all day long of what scouts do, including Tommy Hawk, which I guess they, they throw them, and, and all kinds of, they have a, I know that they have a helicopter coming. They have all kinds of activities that they will be demonstrating throughout the whole year. I know, I'm looking at the chief back there, he's going, "Oh." But it will be a wonderful day, and you are invited to go and look at what they do, and have what they accomplish, and the many activities that they, they do have going that day. And to be able to show, if you have kids or grandkids that you can take up there and let them see what, what goes on, they'll have things going on all day long. And so, up at Lee Hall Mansion on November the fifth. And again, thank you all for coming and for being involved, because it's very important. And so, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
I'd like to say, good evening to everyone, those in chambers and those that are viewing. I'd like to just start off my comments by giving condolences to the family of one of my classmates, Ben Selden, who passed last week. It was a surprise to us. We got to see Ben at our alumni weekend, and our class, which is the last sophomore class of Huntington High School, were a very close class, and so I know that we'll miss him as we prepare for our next class reunion. So I just want to make sure that we extend those condolences to his family. There are a couple of things, great, a lot of things are happening in the city of Newport News, and of course, I always say the great things are happening in our city. But I want to give congratulations to the garden club. We, last week, we were listed as a Bee City affiliate. We celebrated with Bee City USA. We had, I wanna thank the city manager's office and David Freeman, who was a champion. They gave David some high kudos, and when David gets started on something, he really gets excited, so, yeah. So thank you, David, and thank the city manager for allowing him to work with them. And we do encourage individuals to plant flowers and greenery that's welcoming for pollination for our bees. I don't like bumblebees, but I love the honey. And we were excited, and so I'm excited about the local bee farmers and the beekeepers, and hope they'll be, we'll be able to support them with getting that honey for the, for the local economy. So that was great. Also, I wanna celebrate Bishop Ray Johnson, Raymond Johnson, and his consecration as bishop with the Dominion Church. He is known for his work and ministry and dedication throughout the city, so I do want to make sure I extend congratulations to him. I wanna celebrate also Pastor James Green III and his seventh anniversary as pastor of St. John's Church of God in Christ. Had a great time with them on Sunday night, and truly, he is loved in the community. He's loved by his church family, and we had a great time in service. I wanted also to celebrate Avella. It was so wonderful to be at the airport, to see the maiden flight come in, and I encourage you to get your tickets to Fort Lauderdale, Orlando for twenty-nine dollars. Encourage you to take advantage of that, going down to Orlando. And I do believe that we're gonna begin to see growth in, in our airport and for our airport and community. It was great to be able to talk to some of the passengers. One, one young man was on his way to Orlando to meet his parents and was gonna drive back from Orlando back home, but he said he was just so thankful to have to be, to be able to get that flight and to do that. So we're believing for great things to happen at the airport. There are some upcoming events that I wanna make sure that we cover. I wanna send out birthday greetings to some of my family members. Regina Johns, her birthday's coming up on this Thursday. If she's listening, I'm, I'm telling her now, so if I forget Thursday, I've gotten it out. Leonard Johns, and then Howard Jones, they're both coming up for November, so I do wanna make sure that I send out kudos and birthday greetings to my family members. Also, we're gonna have another, another great upcoming event that I always get excited about is the Kids' Preneur Expo. November is National Entrepreneurship Month, and this month allows the nation to recognize the next generation of entrepreneurs, and to celebrate them as being innovators, especially for the city of Newport News. We're looking for innovators and creators. And although we weren't able to get them, excuse me, a proclamation done from the city recognizing them for National Entrepreneurship Month, I just wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Alicia Bennett. She's from the Bennett Center, and she's the founder of Kid Preneur Expo. And I got to, before COVID, we were able to go to the Hampton Convention Center, and that's coming up for the month of November. And I encourage you, if you're able to get out there when that date comes out, to see the Kid Preneur Expo. It was amazing to see the creativity that our children have, and children across Hampton Roads are able to participate that. You're gonna see some food, some fashion, you're gonna see a lot of what our children already have in them, and we just wanna make sure that we support them, and they also have prizes. So I say congratulations to Ms. Bennett on that upcoming expo. Let's see. The other thing I just wanna let you know is that we are going to reestablish the, the Community Fall Fest. We started the Downtown Newport News Merchant and Neighbors Association in partnership with the city as well. We started the Community Fall Fest about seven years ago, and this was as a result of, we, we wanna thank our Parks and Rec for the great job that they do for our Fall Festival, but we weren't able to have Fall Fest this year. But once I got to go to Fall Fest, I realized that some of our children, a lot of our children, are not really able to get out to our Newport News Park, which is in the north part of the city. So we started the Community Fall Fest, and so we were asked by the community if we could go ahead and do it again, so we will have it this coming Saturday from one to three. The address will be six Seventeen Twenty-Seven Street. We'll have popcorns, we'll have games, and every child will be able to get their own pumpkin. You can do whatever you wanna do with that pumpkin, paint it, carve it, whatever you wanna do, but children must be accompanied by adults. And we also encourage the children to wear costumes, because prizes are awarded for those individuals who wear costumes. And the last thing, Mister Mayor, I wanted to say is, of course, we had a great time today with the groundbreaking. I'll let you finish that part.
Thank you, Mayor.
But, but just one last thing. Historical Hilton is having their Fall Festival on Saturday, October the twenty-ninth, from three to nine P.M. I encourage you to come out and support Historic Hilton, the Fall Festival. Lots of great vendors will be out there, and so I just say, come out and support our city in whatever way you can. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you. I just wanna, again, thank Lambda Omega, Chapter Vega A for this honor, it really touches my heart, I appreciate that. I'll see you later. Also, today was so exciting. One of the most exciting events I've attended in twelve years, and that was the groundbreaking of our Early Childhood Center. If you could've seen those kids today and, and knowing what their future was, I wanna thank Mike Peters for his global aspect on what this means to the community, what, what this will mean to the future of this city. It's just a great, great event. I've also been lucky enough to have a, a second event, which was a chance of a lifetime. I got to land on an aircraft carrier last week at the Ford, which is the newest model, the next class of aircraft carriers, the Ford, to land on, in a cargo plane seated backwards, which was weird, with no windows, and spend the night and talk to the crewman, and just to be able to say, you know, after everybody talked about how great that ship was, yeah, we made that here in Newport News. So it was really, really a great experience, and we should, all of the cities should be proud of how we, we are represented by the people who've put together, you know, eight years, seven to eight years of making an aircraft carrier, and the fact that, you know, it's gonna come back in twenty-five years to be redesigned and refueled. It, it's gonna be a, a great thing, especially this next class. We got three more in, in the slot, the, the Enterprise, Doris Miller, which is first time ever of a, a service person being named for one, and the new JFK. So three more. By law, we are mandated in this country to have eleven aircraft carriers, so that should keep, hopefully, this city on track for a while. So with that, if there is nothing else.
Mister Mayor, has nobody mentioned this?
There will not be a first meeting in November? Yes. The next meeting will be November twenty-second, and the State of the City will happen before the next meeting. On the sixteenth, I believe. Right. And also, voting has started. Get out and vote. There's a whole list of things of, last day of registration is passed, but at least you, absentee ballot, the last day is the twenty-eighth of this month. So get on the website, see where you are supposed to vote, make sure that you have whatever's needed to do that, and we encourage everyone to do the process that this country has always done, and that is to vote in a democratic way. So with that, if there's no further business, may what you say and do uplift the city of Newport News. We stand adjourned.